Okay, we are right at seven o'clock. If I could have your attention, please. We are right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... Justice to the fight of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on our ground, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I just want to highlight and make sure everybody's can have an item that was added, and that was item eight E, which is the North Shore Circle Park Shoreline Restoration Grant Letter of Support. Just want to make sure that that's highlighted as it is a newer addition. With that, I will ask for a motion to approve. I'll second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested opportunity, any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. I know we have a full house here tonight. I suspect a lot of you are here to, here in particular, the presentation, which is an after-open forum presentation from the Pickleball Association. If you are here specifically for that, welcome. We're glad you're here. I understand there's going to be a presentation of a number of members for that. However, if there's anybody else that is not planning to present that wanted to speak on this topic, you're welcome to do so now as part of open forum. This time is yours. We're happy to hear from you. If you want to just be here to support and not speak publicly, that is fine as well. I just wanted anyone who wanted to speak tonight to have an opportunity. If you weren't part of the planned presentation, now would be a great time as part of open forum. Or on any other topic. Did we have anyone signed up for open forum tonight?
Mayor, there was no one else signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak in open forum this evening? All right, not seeing anyone come forward, we will close open forum and bring it back to our planned presentation, which is our next agenda item. This is a bit unusual for us in that we typically in a council meeting do not have specific presentations. However, I know that there is a large interested party, so I'm happy to accommodate the agenda time tonight. This happens to be hitting at a great time for us. We are in the middle of budget season. We just heard in our last workshop, the first round of planned budget, and Park's budget is part of that conversation. So what you have to say tonight is quite impactful. I understand that there is a planned presentation. Council, there will be an opportunity for some Q and A and just some open dialogue. I think we have planned about 10 minutes in total of agenda time. Again, no hard rule on that. This time is really for whatever it takes to kind of get through the planned content. Just a note, we did not ask staff to do any sort of preparation or presentation. This really is between the Pickleball Association and any questions that council may have. So with that, whoever wanted to speak, invite you to the podium. And welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. I would like to recognize the people here that have come, and if you'd raise your hand if you're part of the pickleball group.
And Eugene, is that how you refer to yourselves as the Pickleball Group? Is there an association? Is it the Forest Lake Pickleball Group?
Yeah, we do have a group, and then, and that will be addressed too.
Okay, perfect.
But what I'd like to do is just give you just a little bit of history of pickleball and that, and I'm going to just pass this with a pickleball paddle out. They're real high-tech. We've got some experts out here actually that know all about them. They're honeycomb inside, and it's, and they cost quite a bit, but we've got some experts that really know. But then, and then we're going to have a short little demonstration. I'll try to move right along. But we'll have a demonstration of somebody going back and forth, some real skilled pickleball players. My address is 10234 204th Street North, Forest Lake, Minnesota. Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda to speak about the fastest-growing sport in America, pickleball. I would like to thank the previous council from a number of years past for listening to a group of movers and shakers from Forest Lake, and some of them are here tonight. And of course, back then, seven years ago approximately, pickleball wasn't that well-known. Pickleball was invented in the summer of 1965 at Joel Pritchard's home on Bain Bridge Island, Washington. Mayor Bain, any relation? No?
Unfortunately, no.
Along with a neighbor Barney McCullum. It started out, they were looking for something for their children could play as they were bored. They started out on an old, bad mitten court with the net high up. They started out with wooden ping-pong paddles and wiffle balls. As they began playing the game, they refined the rules. Examples, they lowered the nets and increased the size of the paddles. Pickleball started growing in areas of gyms at the wise and physical education classes out west. It started to move to different areas of the country and is now the fastest-growing sport in the USA. According to the Association of Pickleball Professionals, over 48 million to 50 million people have now played pickleball at least once in the past 12 months. There are many seniors that are playing pickleball, but there are young people now getting into the game. So I'm going to take the paddle and the pickleball, and I'm asking a couple volunteers here that are going to come up and just give you a little demonstration on how we do a little drill. Okay, we're going to get apart from each other. All right? Ready? All right. We have a couple excellent players, and they go to tournaments and they win. And we had another young man, Jamie Hafner Jr., and he's approximately his age, I think.
He's about 11, I think.
11?
Eleven. Yeah.
And he's won tournaments, so it's, you know, really kind of pretty of a neat thing. We know the sport is growing at a rapid pace. We will soon outgrow our seven courts. We would like to be proactive, as we know things take a while to process. We would like to thank Dave Adams and the maintenance group for getting the courts ready for the season quickly. I think there were some people out there when it was probably in the 40s or even less, you know, even when the weather broke. Now I'm going to turn it over to Dwayne Detburner, who has, he's got more information, and then we have another speaker, and then in the end I'll conclude. In a, okay?
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Dwayne Detburner. I live at 6350 196th Street North in Forest Lake, and I'm a 45-year resident of Forest Lake and a pickleball player. Though I've lived here a long time, I never really got to know the city or its residents very well because for 37 years, I commuted to my job in Roseville, came home, and then went up to the cabin, and went to church, and all those sort of things, but I never really got to know the city and never not got to know the residents. But after I retired, I did something at one time I thought was unthinkable. I started playing pickleball. Within a short time, I built dozens of acquaintances and friends. Those dozens have now turned into so many I can't count them all. Pickleball is not just a game. It's a social network, a personal support group, and a community builder. This meant ever so much to me personally two years ago when my wife passed away. We are not a small group. We have 452 players on our player list from in and around Forest Lake, representing both men and women from ages 12 to over 80. We have 50, we added just 56 new players this year. Each weekday morning during the warm months, 30 to 50 players regularly show up at Fenway Courts and 20 or so more in the evenings. Just last weekend on Saturday, over 100 players were at Fenway, playing starting at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and some were still playing at 6:00 p.m. at night. These courts get tremendous use. Our group has purchased an equipment storage locker for the courts. We have an AED which we purchased that's always on site, and we've offered CPR training for all our players. The courts at Fenway were built on an existing concrete pad originally meant for winter ice, an ice rink, and/or a summer basketball court. But those things never really happened, so when pickleball began to become popular, some lobbying convinced the city to make the area pickleball courts. The reasoning at that time included fulfilling the need of providing seniors in the city with a recreational outlet, which they didn't have. That goal has been met, and then some. I say this all to lead up to the point where we are asking the city for a commitment for a maintenance plan for the courts. Cracks are now present at each of the seven courts, and many have significant chips. With winter coming, greater damage will be done over the next freeze-thaw cycle, just like it happens on concrete sidewalks and slabs everywhere in Minnesota. This park, in my opinion, gets more person-hours of use than any park in the city. We just ask that it be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? My name is Tony Wood. My address is 15127 French Drive North in Hugo, Minnesota. I've been playing pickleball regularly for about five years. I started on the Forest Lake Courts. I play competitively and locally, and also in other states such as California and Florida. I'm a certified pickleball pro at Lifetime, and I'm also a certified pickleball teaching professional with the registry. I consider my pickleball family to be here at Fenway Park. That's where I started, with some guys in the morning at 6:00 a.m. And they were having such a good time. I just kept coming back, and here I am, five years later. As you've heard, pickleball is an extremely popular and fast-growing sport. There are pickleball locations all around the country, and major sponsors with thousands of members showing up for multiple tournaments, millions of dollars in revenue through advertising. You've probably heard some of the very popular professionals such as Tom Brady and LeBron James have actually owned Major League Pickleball teams. This sport's getting crazy. It really is. It's out of control, and really in Forest Lake, it kind of leads the northern St. Paul area in participation. I play all around the cities on a regular basis. I play two times a day. I teach. It's my full-time job, believe it or not. And anyway, so something about our area that I thought was interesting, Naples Daily News, a paper in Florida, said the five most pickleball-obsessed cities in the United States are Miami, Florida, Tampa, all Florida cities, and Atlanta, which is a warm-weather state, and then Arminapolis. So this area is out of control. It's bonkers. I won't repeat some of the things that have already been said, but it's, let's see. I think pickleball is different in a lot of ways. I think one of the major ways is you can be an athlete, and you don't have to be an athlete. There's people that come out that are prior tennis players, ping-pong players, golfers, people with very good hand-eye coordination, you know, athletic ability. But really, there's a lot of people out here that have never played sports in their life, and they pick up a pickleball paddle, and they can compete. And I think there's two different sides to pickleball. I think it's the competition side and the social aspect that makes it so unique and so popular. Because if you've never played pickleball or never done any sport, you can walk onto a court, and you can meet some people for the first time and strike up a conversation. Forest Lake is one of the most welcoming communities of pickleball players in the entire, in the fire state, and believe me, I've probably played at at least 50 locations from Bloomington to Maple Grove to Eden Prairie to Edina and on and on and on. I want to just mention quickly that in Hugo, our neighbor to the south, just revamped, and you might be aware of this, Lions Park, and put millions of dollars in that park to make it a beautiful place. The kids' area is phenomenal. They used to have a really, really bad two tennis courts there. I don't know whatever happened in those tennis courts, but they weren't using them for tennis for many, many years. When they redid the park, they went and started to think about what they wanted to do, so they added two pickleball courts and one tennis court. So they dropped a tennis court, add a pickleball court. Every time I go by there on my way to Fenway, it's right on my way, there's pickleball players out there. And if there's people on the tennis court, they're waiting to play pickleball. So it's, it's really an amazing sport, and I'll just ask you guys, and for, thank you for your consideration in this matter. It's very dear to our hearts. You can tell the enthusiasm behind us. These guys are really enthusiasts to the highest degree. We just ask that you expand, or you maintain the courts to a workable level, keep them safe, keep them playable, and then also consider increasing the number of courts and improving the facility. Because unlike, unlike us, we're, unlike other communities, we do have a gem here, and we get a lot of visitors from the surrounding towns like Scandia and Columbus and Blaine and Hugo. So anyway, we thank you for your support in this matter. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
A number of things, just in conclusion, and I might repeat some of it, but I hope we were informative and that you get an idea about pickleball. It's a great social gathering. We have many new friends. It's a great outlet. When you're, when you're playing, you don't remember what's going on in the world and concentrate, but you concentrate on having fun. It's great, too, for staying in shape. Municipalities are putting new courts in as realtors know that people now are looking for parks that have pickleball. And I know there's a development south of the courts and to the west behind the Taylor Farm and stuff. There's more houses coming in there. And so we know that there'll be more participation from them, and other places that you have developing here that Forest Lake does. We have so many people attending, and they come from everywhere and love the Fenway Courts. If we keep the courts in great shape and maintain them, it will be less cost in the end. Yes, the courts are playable right now, but the cracks, if with winter and water and rain and snow and stuff, they will begin to get wider, and then we've got a problem. And we don't want to have to resurface if we can, if we maintain them properly. I did go over and I saw the courts at Belts Park, and there's big, huge cracks in it, and they're not playable for tennis or anything. So hopefully, though, we can, you know, keep, and real concerned about the ones that we do have are seven. Some other suggestions that we would like to be thinking about adding lights, okay? This is a, and I'm not the expert on it, but I know that it can be done to a point where I don't think we need a lot of, you know, these big tremendous poles and lights and that. I think it can reach over and still do the job and stuff. We have a great group that would be interested in working with the city, okay? And would help in fundraising and different things for the courts and whatever. It may be lighting or the, and then maybe additional courts and that that would pertain to pickleball. One question we would have is, it was asked by some people if we could do fundraisers for pickleball courts, whether it would be something to put in or maintain, could it be designated for the courts? And I just want to thank you for allowing us to speak. We hope what we've said can take place with action. And if there's any questions, if you have any questions or comments, the council, we'd sure certainly like to take them. We've got all kinds of smart people here.
Thank you, Eugene, and thank you for everyone that's been here tonight. Council, I'll open it up. Any questions that you may have for Eugene or the group?
It's a matter of funding, seeing so far we haven't, apparently the staff hasn't had a chance to look at this, so it's kind of hard to know exactly what our, how that would fit into our budget and...
Yeah, we've been waiting for quite a while just to make sure that the courts get taken care of properly and the cracks and the number of chips and stuff. And right now, like I say, they may look to some people that they're not too bad, but with our type of weather and contraction and everything, it's, it's not going to, you know, be good. So we need, we need some answers if we can from, and I know it's a, the business is nope, I don't want to give anybody any excuses or that, but it's, it's fast-growing. There's many courts being made and stuff, but we need somebody to come and give us an estimate so that we can, if we need to raise money or with the city and funds and kind of get it organized. So, go ahead.
That was, so that was maybe one of my, my questions, as we are looking at park maintenance budget, and it's a, it's a budget that covers all facilities, so it's everything from supporting youth baseball at Coolen Camp to supporting youth softball at Fenway. The pickleball fields kind of fall into that same budget. And one area where we've had success on specific requests is when there's been a partnership opportunity. I think about what we just did, for example, with the Lake Association and the expanded dock at Lakeside Memorial Park. We were able to do some joint fundraising together, create, you know, create some funds and make something happen, accelerated a project that otherwise was backlogged. Maintenance, in my opinion, should be, you know, standard maintenance is part of our plan and is something that should continue to be on the city. But as we're looking at expansion either of courts, expansion of facilities, of adding lights, I think those are great partnership opportunities. My question was if there was some interest in some joint fundraising. It sounds like there is. My recommendation would be that we have a kind of a representative from your group sit down with city staff over the next couple of months and just kind of develop out what that might look like and get some estimates, so you all know what that funding might look like. We know what that funding might look like, and we can start to get that on to our park kind of expansion plan.
We would appreciate that.
Excellent. Any other questions or go ahead?
I just have a couple of comments. Thanks, everyone, for coming. I, you know, we were told every week that we're here that we're defrayed maintenance, we're not keeping up with it. This is an opportunity where I think we've got a great situation out there. Let's not let it go to heck like a lot of other facilities have in the city, and so I think at a minimum at a minimum, I think we need to try to just get a price, and if that can be done sooner than later, so we can get it on a budget for next year, because we don't want to continue these situations where it's just going to deteriorate. I think it does have to happen in '24 if possible, if it fits in the budget.
Understood, and I believe that there's been some requests put out for...
We have contacted a company that does that. As the gentleman and audience say, pickleball's very busy, so, so are the companies that do the resurfacing. We're on their calendar. It just depends when they come out and get out to look at it.
Is there more than one company?
I'm sure there's more, but I think this is, there's not too many that do pickleball courts at this point. Tennis court ones, but pickleball courts, we've at least contacted one. We'll see if there's other, but I think these are specialty, these are specialty surfaces that you have to put in on these types of courts, so pickleball may be more limited than tennis. I'm not sure. It's been a while since I've looked at resurfacing courts, but...
Understood. So maintenance is high on radar, and then also let's like not lose sight of if there's some desire for some expansion. That takes some time to get into place and get funded, and so continuing those conversations as we're wrapping up the season would also be good.
If it's a possibility to look into other companies, because if this company is, is put off for much longer, we're going to, you know, have some struggles. And maybe if there's that possibility of looking at, because they're, they're special. I'm, I'm sure that there's companies that do tennis courts that are paved and like what we have, and that they could probably do the, you know, estimate or whatever, so we appreciate that.
Very good. Well, we appreciate you all being here tonight. You are welcome to stay for the duration. Very good. Well, we appreciate you all being here tonight. You are welcome to stay for the duration of our meeting. If you had other plans, I also would completely understand. So thank you. Council will pause for just a few moments. Okay, I think we can resume. Council for your consideration tonight, our consent agenda items 7A through 7F.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I would like to pull 7C if we could for, for the consideration.
Understood. And then, so.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
We will move item 7C to the regular agenda. With that, I would move that council approve consent agenda items 7A, B, D, E, and F. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and our consent agenda is approved. Um, moving to the regular agenda, item 7C is the minutes from August 21st, 2023, our council workshop. I would move that council approve those meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion since this is a regular agenda item? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, one abstention. Okay, continuing with the regular agenda, reg- agenda item 8A, which includes a public hearing for ordinance 726 zoning ordinance text amendment regarding contractor yards. And Abby, I believe you're walking us through this.
I am, I am. Thank you, uh, Mayor Bain, members of the council. The city is receipt of a request from interstate companies to modify the zoning code, which is known as a zoning ordinance text amendment. Just for reference, for folks that don't know, either up on the dais in the audience or at home, interstate companies owns land along Forest Road North near the intersection with Highway 97. I do have the site location up for you. Um, they currently have a contractor yard on the property that was permitted by the city some time ago. However, the zoning code does not allow for contractor yards in their industrially zoned district. So the request by interstate companies is to modify the zoning ordinance to allow for contractor yards by conditional use permit in the industrial district. I'm gonna pull up for the council for reference. Um, the industrial district is everything that's kind of this lavenderish color. So right now, everything along Forest Boulevard, we've got the property that would be developed by Norhart and their factory, our airport, little bit of land over by that Fenway complex that we were just talking about earlier. Um, and then some land that we'll actually talk about a little bit later this evening um, that the city owns near Highway 61 and Headwaters Parkway. There isn't a lot of industrially zoned land within the city. And for the most part, other than the lands that are directly bordering along Highway 61, lands are a little more tucked into the community a little bit. So if approved, um, the request would allow for interstate companies to expand their facility um, upon request and approval of a conditional use permit. So on the August 9th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did make recommendation to the council to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment. A code is pretty clear that you have discretion to change the zoning ordinance as you really see fit. If you think it's appropriate within the city. It does um, suggest some standards for things like public gain and benefit to the community as a whole. Um, comprehensive plan consistency, zoning code consistency, whether it reflects changes in community policy or cleans up the code. In the staff analysis and the report, we really have brought forth the findings that there's no conflicts in our existing comprehensive plan or the zoning code. Anything that would prohibit you from approving this zoning ordinance text amendment. One of the biggest kind of concerns would be for a community is contractor service yards tend to be a lesser desirable land use that can have some implications for their neighbors. However, what staff has done is worked with the applicant and our legal counsel to establish some standards for that type of use that would really help protect neighbors from things like view. And again, these would be considered by conditional use permit. So as each one would come forward, we have the opportunity to place site specific conditions on that business and that specific use. So for interstate companies, that'd be coming back around to the Planning Commission at a later date. So while they have asked for that conditional use permit, that's not really for consideration tonight. The only thing for your council consideration is the zoning ordinance text amendment to allow for contractor yards in the industrial district by conditional use permit. Staff recommends that council move to adopt ordinance um, that adds contractor yards as a conditional use. And I believe before you tonight that ordinance is number 08282301. The staff report notes approving it with 10 conditions, but those conditions are embedded in the staff report. So really it would just be a motion to approve ordinance 08282301 that would approve. Oh, no, my, my ordinance is out of order. How did that happen?
Is it ordinance 726?
Is it ordinance 726?
Yeah, so it says here anyway.
Thank you.
I believe so.
I, I just referenced the wrong ordinance number.
Okay.
Ordinance number 726. I was citing the resolution number for um, the next item.
Thank you. A quick point of just clarification. Um, so tonight we're being asked to approve ordinance 726. This is anticipation of a um, a site specific project. However, just for clarification, the ordinance does impact the entire um, industrial district. Is that correct, Abby?
That is correct. And I'll pull up on that zoning code map again, just uh, up on the screen for reference. I'll kind of zoom in on the areas that we have concentrated industrial zone um, in the city. I will just note for the record too, much of the industrially zoned properties are, are developed. Maybe not as much along Forest Road or Highway 97, but that stuff around Fenway, around Headwaters Parkway, almost all of that's developed out with differing land uses. And as per our comp plan, should be rezoned accordingly to uh, not reflect that industrial, underlying industrial zoning district.
Understood. Thank you. We are, there is a, a public hearing on the agenda this evening. Council, any questions for Abby prior to me opening up the public hearing? Not seeing anything. We will, let's open the public hearing. And is there anybody that would like to speak on this topic this evening? And we don't have anyone online, do we?
I do not.
Okay. Open it up, keep it open here for just another moment. All right. Not seeing anyone come forward or close public hearing and bring conversation back to council. Council for your consideration is ordinance 726. Happy to entertain any questions or discussion on this item? My opinion seems pretty straight, pretty straightforward of um, my concern was around screening, but because we have these under a conditional use permit, screening would be one of the considerations of those consider, those conditional use permits. And so I'm comfortable that we've got the right control mechanism in place. Any other questions or concerns? Not seeing any. Anyone ready for a motion?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 726, ordinance, zoning ordinance text amendment, contractor yards.
Motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and a motion carries. All right. Our next item this evening is Resolution 8282301. Um, and it's the Washington County Environmental Center. And Abby also.
Thank you, Mayor Bain. Uh, members of the council, as you may remember, a couple of months ago, the city entered into a land swap agreement with Washington County uh, for a piece of property the city owns located near the intersection of Highway 61 and Headwaters Boulevard. Karen, could you pull up the screen for me and I'll just show the location of the property that the city owns? As a reminder, that land swap agreement contemplates uh, the city giving Washington County this parcel in exchange for a parcel up on the north part of the property. That action does require plat uh, of the property that's never been, or a plat for the property that's never been um, because the property's never been platted. So the request before you tonight is consideration of a preliminary and final plat and a grading permit, a conditional grading permit approval. Um, the city's planning commission have reviewed the conditional use permit and site plan approval. They did gain uh, conditional approval from the Planning Commission on August 9th. Those conditional approvals are contingent on this plat approval. So once the plat is approved, then the city staff would continue to work with the county for the transfer of the lands um, between the two parties. That would come back before you at a later date. So the request before you with the conditional grading permit is to start work on land that is owned by the city right now for the future house, household hazardous environmental center. Household hazardous waste, the Northern Environmental Center. I don't know exactly how it's branded the best, but this is the um, just kind of giving you an image of what you would see along, on the city's property. The design of the building, the layout, all those things aren't up for the council consideration, but I just thought it's a prettier picture than looking at a plat, which would essentially redraw the boundaries of the properties. So we have those two existing properties right now. It's that dotted line here. That's the county property. Dash dotted line here, which is another existing property, would be combined with that, that the city would own for our future public works facility. New roadway would be platted off the Headwaters Parkway um, intersection lining right up with Headwaters Parkway uh, to the south of Highway 61. That would then transfer into that parcel that the city owns, that we would be um, providing swapping with the county. I'm just gonna go back. That would enable the county to build their hazardous waste center, the environmental center. Um, again, that roadway coming in, it would end up, folks would drive in, there's parking offices up front. But then they also have the opportunity to drive through, drop off materials all behind the building. Most of the operations of the facility will be screened just by the building itself. So tonight for your consideration is again, that plat, the preliminary and final plat approval for the Northern Environmental Center and then conditional grading permit. Um, just a couple of things to note. Um, there are some minor modifications that we've requested to the plat, so which is a really common thing. Um, the conditions of approval do require that those conditions are met before we would release that final plat. Uh, as a note, just for the council, all future roadways that are kind of shown through here, the extension through Headwaters Parkway, all of that would be built by the county up to the city's property or the property line shared with the city. Additionally, there's no parks being dedicated, but there is an off-street trail that will connect right from the Highway 61, the Hardwood Creek Trail there, um, the Headwaters Parkway Trail, and that would connect right up to the city property as well. Eventually, the plan would be to connect that to County Road 50 as part of a future project with the city. We will have a little gap in that trail system right now, but in the end, we'll have a little loop there, which I think is a really good benefit to the community. Um, overall, the plat, uh, the plat conforms to the city code standards for the approval of preliminary and final plat. And so therefore, staff would recommend you approve um, the, um, so you have two actions tonight. One would be to adopt resolution now we're 08282301 cited earlier, but this is actually the approval. The preliminary and final plots for the Northern Environmental Center of Washington County. And then move to approve the conditional grading permit for Washington County PID 2903221110003, the site of the county and Northern Environmental Center.
Thank you, Abby. Council, questions for Abby?
Well, we've discussed this several times. This is a great idea. It's gonna be a great facility for the city forest lake, I think. Um, but the only other question, this, Mendat Aeronautics, they never, they didn't have a problem with any of this.
Um, the project is still being reviewed by Mendat. So right now, this would allow them to do site grading. Um, that, you know, to be able to prep the land for the building, but we have not heard any adverse impacts from aeronautics. We can verify that before building permit release.
There shouldn't be, but we, we just gotta make sure. Otherwise, it's a great idea.
I'm happy to support this project this evening as well. One of the questions I think that's come up a number of times is just related to intersection design. I understand the plan is to use Headwaters Parkway. Is, is tonight the, the place where that intersection design is at in final design? Or is there another phase coming up where we'll see more about turn lanes and any other concerns that might come out of the site plan?
Sure. So they did gain site plan approval for everything you see here. So the actual configuration of the internal road, which will be a public road and the building. They don't currently have any sort of site plan approval for any changes to Highway 61, which are pending with Mendat. They do believe that they will have that later this year. Um, they do have site access approval from Mendat. It's just a construction site access. Formal access um, needs to be obtained before they can have a certificate of occupancy. So you will see that coming back. Uh, the city will see any alterations to the highway come back before them, before they're implemented. Um, the county has been advised that that does need to include some public outreach to neighbors in that area. Um, but we will end up having a development agreement on this and we'll talk about those things at the time the development agreement comes back. We anticipate having a development agreement, I think, in just a month, right?
Yeah. Understood. Thank you. That was my only question on, of the items.
This is somewhat related, but uh, there was some confusion maybe by staff or, or legal about the party that's renting, the leasing the space that the city owns and that, that nursery building. Has that been worked out and we have a?
In progress.
But, but they're not gonna be asked to be out September 1st or anything like the initial letter was?
Is there anything around that conversation that would prohibit us from moving forward tonight with what? Okay. Any other questions?
Have you had any public input on this? I mean, one or the other, is it?
Uh, no, we did hold a neighborhood meeting for the site plan conditional permit approval. We did hear from a couple of neighbors to the east. Their primary concern was um, noise. So right now, the um, yard waste disposal um, that we have at the city, a couple of times a year, a chipper will come out and chip the big logs. So some of the conditions of approval that the Planning Commission have imposed is that that chipping can't occur, you know, needs to occur during business hours, you know, the, the daytime, some people are typically at work. Um, I think twice a year.
It probably shouldn't be any different what we're doing now then.
No, it really shouldn't. Um, I think the operations are very similar. There'll be more items that you can dispose of than just your um, your leaves and yard debris. You'll be able to dispose of paint and TVs and all of the things that sometimes get dumped on county hires, local roads in the country. So um, I think it's definitely, I think, we all believe that's gonna be an asset to the community.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, you wanted this in two separate?
Yeah, um, so the, 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 do this in two pieces. The resolution um, contain, contain, the resolution contains the plat, the final plat, um, conditional use permit and the site plan review. And that's, so let's do that first. And then once we've done that, then we'll open up the grading permit as well for consideration.
Make a motion that we adopt resolution 08 dash 28 dash 23 dash 01 for the Washington County Environmental Center for the preliminary plat, final plat, conditional use permit and a site plan review.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries. And next would be the consideration for the grading permit of, of the same project. I would move that council approve the grading permit and permit number PZ 01322.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and approved. Okay, next for consideration is 8C, Headwaters Land Group Hidden Creek. Um, we are going to do this in three parts. Uh, there's um, a resolution, two resolutions and then a development agreement. There's a resolution, two resolutions, and then a development agreement. Abby, do you maybe wanna do an overall presentation? And then we'll move into individual action?
Yes, indeed. So Headwaters Land Group, or Land Development, has submitted for final PUD and plat for Hidden Creek. And this, to refresh some members of the council, or new members to the council, this is for 125 lot residential subdivision planned unit development. So a planned unit development is a phased development that's looking to put in those 125 homes over a period of time. Tonight for consideration is the approval of the final PUD. So the idea that we're gonna do all 125 lots in three phases, and I think we've written the development agreement over three or five years. So there's some timeline that we're gonna see all of those come on board. The second thing for your consideration tonight is the final plat of 22 lot first-phase subdivision. So that is essentially just what would be developed right now. So the council may remember approving a grading permit, a conditional grading permit, that Hidden Creek has started doing some land disturbance on-site associated with this project. For, again, a little bit of back history, this was all a part of the master planned unit development for the Headwaters neighborhood in 2006. The development teams actually submitted application for this portion with Hidden Creek, 100, the 125 lots. In early 2001, it's better, 21, it's been a long time since we've been able to kind of get this one before you for a variety of reasons. However, last year, the city did approve a 33-lot preliminary plat. That was gonna be a little bit farther. They've reduced it down to something that they think is a little bit more market manageable at the moment, opening up development for 33 lots. That ones can be a little risky in this climate. They think 22 is a good number. On August 9th, the planning commission did recommend approval of that three-phased PUD and the associated plat. In my staff report, I run through all of the numbers on how the lots conform to the code, how they maybe deviate from the code. One thing that was brought up by the planning commission that I'll note on the record, there was concern about a 6,000 square foot lot. The PUD allows for lot averaging. This plat that you see before, the final plat that you see before you, I suppose I should open up that final plat. The final plat you see before you is exactly the same as the preliminary plat that was approved in the spring of last year. So there's no inconsistency. This is very much in line with what the city has already approved. Usually, final plats are just a blessing. So, one thing I will note that as part of this plat, the city will be obtaining 3.1 acres, 182 acres, along Headwaters Parkway. It is intentionally designed to be in this location so that when future subdivision to the south actually occurs, there's opportunity for some parkland there as well. I know, we're taking in more parkland. The nice thing is, is these neighborhoods will actually have a park where some of our newer developments don't, and we actually hear quite a bit about that. In subsequent phases, we will accept parkland dedication that can help build out that park so that we have the opportunity to provide that neighborhood with the improvement that they're looking for. So tonight, as Mayor Bain had indicated, you have three actions. One would be to move to approve resolution 08282302, approving the final plan for Hidden Creek. Again, that's the overall development. The second one would be to move to approve resolution 08282303, approving the Hidden Creek final plat. That's just the 22 lots that are coming online right shortly. This fall, we'll see probably construction of a model home. Spring building will really start to pick up. And then move to approve the Hidden Creek development agreement with minor modifications as approved by the city attorney. That is, doesn't have a resolution, but staff would like to note for the record, we'd like to request the council condition that approval, that no utility work without a letter, work occur without a letter of credit and a pre-construction meeting.
You say that last part one more time. You were looking for a conditional approval? With what condition?
No utility work occur without a letter of credit and a pre-construction meeting. And when we get back to that, I'm happy to help note that motion for the record again. We recommend approval of all three items, so.
Is, I'm jumping ahead, but question while it's on my mind. The condition of no utility work without a letter of credit, isn't that a standard, isn't that a standard? Are you looking for just added emphasis, or is this a different requirement than what would be standard?
We did not write that into the grading, well, so yes, it's in the development agreement. It's just, there might be other things that they need to do with the development agreement. So the development agreement might say, hey, we're not gonna release the plat until you do X, Y, Z. This would allow them to install utilities after they have, we have a letter of credit and a pre-application on file, even though the plat might not be ready to be released. It's allowing them smaller steps to keep moving forward without maybe necessarily having all the ducks in a row.
Counsel, I'm happy to take further questions that you may have on that as we get, as we get to it. So first, for councils, maybe let's just step through these individually. Actually, before we kind of talk about specific resolutions in action, just broad, overall project council, any questions that you might have for staff or kind of broad, overall? This has been through a number of conversations so far. We had a specific workshop, working session with the developer on this particular topic. Happy to see us getting to this point this evening and getting closer to moving forward. With not seeing any specific questions coming forward, maybe let's consider then, I guess, just to kick off the conversation, I would move that council approve resolution 8282302, which is the final plan for the Hidden Creek PUD.
A second.
And some motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Just continuing on here, I would move that council approve resolution 8282303, which is the Hidden Creek final plat. We have a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Again, I don't mean to move us faster than anyone has questions, you're not holding us up. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm not hearing any discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries. And then, I'll just continue here. I would move that council approve the Hidden Creek Development Agreement with a condition that no utility work begin without a letter of credit and a pre-construction meeting.
And just, could I also note for the record, Mayor Bain, with minor modifications as approved by the city attorney? It's a pretty standard agreement condition. I should have noted that when I mentioned asking.
Let me try that one more time. So I would move that council approve the Hidden Creek Development Agreement with the condition that no utility work begin without a letter of credit and a pre-construction meeting. Also incorporated into that would be minor modifications as approved by the city attorney. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries. Thank you for being here this evening. Okay. Counsel, next for your consideration, ordinance 727, which is the prohibition of cannabis use in public spaces. Amanda, I believe you're walking us through this?
Thank you, Anna, counsel. So before you tonight is the Cannabis Use in Public Places Ordinance, ordinance number 727. When we discussed this at the last meeting, you had some, the council had some changes that you wanted to have made specifically, that you wanted the definition of public place to be kind of ratcheted down a little bit to just include government-owned property and not public property, excuse me, private property held out for public use. So that change is noted on page 136 of your packet. Otherwise, the words are identical to the ordinance that you saw last time. I'm looking for a motion to approve the ordinance. As a note, the second ordinance that we discussed, which is the moratorium or the interim ordinance, under the cannabis statute that requires a 10-day public notice period, and so when we had to hit the newspaper, didn't allow it to be on this meeting, so you will see that at the first meeting in September. If you have any questions. Otherwise, again, the ordinance is 727.
Understood. Thank you, Amanda. Anyone watching, this was a, this is a follow-up ordinance to a workshop topic that we had fairly extensive conversation on in our last meeting. Counsel, any follow-up thoughts from that, or any specifics before we consider the motion? I say motion, I should indicate ordinance. I guess one thing I would say is, as we, as we see how cannabis use kind of plays out in our, in our public spaces, I continue to be open to us passing an amendment to this to be more restrictive. If we see, and I feel like this is where we should really be serving, serving the public need, and if we start to hear from businesses that use in their parking lots is a problem, and they would rather us take a broader role of enforcement and have a more, kind of a restrictive ordinance, I'm open to that. But I'm also open to an absence of having a strong history here, a starting light, which would be government-owned properties, parks. And we can always, in my mind, you know, amend that, be more restrictive in the future. But I just wanted to say, I'm open to that if it becomes problematic.
I know a couple of instances where they've come in with their own policies, and I think that's the main thing, is that these, these businesses should be able to do that and, you know, pro or con. So, as long as they're protected that way, too. I just want to make sure of that.
Any other comments? I'm open for a motion if anyone's ready.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 727, cannabis public, in public places.
We could, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. All right, next up on our agenda, item 8E, which is the North Shore Circle Park Shoreline Restoration Grant Letter of Support. And Abby, I believe you're walking us through this as well?
I am. Mayor Bain, members of the council, I apologize for the late submission and the agenda change, but I'm happy to try to get this onto the council for your consideration. Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District has been into, staff has been in discussions with the city for some time about doing a shoreline restoration demonstration project within the city limits. And last year, we did some work in the North Shore Circle neighborhood, specifically work that included a storm pond and some regrading of the parkland in that area. It's not well represented up on the screen, but you can at least see where it's located in the city. Since that project was done, the shoreline, though it has been stabilized, does still have some improvements there that are helping protect the, all the work, the grading work that was going in, protect the lake, protect the land. What Comfort Lake Forest Lake would like to do is come in and do a comprehensive shoreline restoration project through here that would include a 20-foot buffer from the park shoreline. And what that, the goals of this would include grading the ridge back, planting the area with shorelines mixed and containerized plants, planting canopy trees, and establishing a meandering trail. So this is the design that they would include, that would have some lakeshore plantings, some riprap, and some shore canopy trees. If you give me just a second, I'm gonna go back into my email. I had a photo open that kind of shows what that looks like. So if you can hang on. What, what they'd like to do is submit a grant to the Minnesota DNR for $35,000 to do the project. If they're awarded the funds, that would include three years of their maintenance of the work on our land. As of right now, we have no formal agreement with them. That would have to be something that we would have to iron out. But what Comfort Lake Forest Lake right now is asking is just a letter of support for their submission of the project on our land. And give me just a second, I will find, show you kind of what a shoreline project looks like, and then I.
Abby, while you're opening that up, maybe a question that Dave could respond to. North Shore Circle Park is currently just an open space, is that right? So we're not in this consideration impacting any existing facilities other than open space? There's not, am I right with that?
It was an open space, completely open, and then as part of the North Shore Circle project, they put in a, some type of a stormwater pond with some filtering and then, oh, right now, it's just a berm on the back. And then it just closed the water to go in the lake. It's water filtration and water clarity, so this would clean up that back end. We've got a number of complaints and phone calls about how it kind of looks shabby now. Number one, we had to wait for it all to establish before it could mow, just as part of the contract, but no, this should really.
Thank you. Pulling up a new aerial that you can kind of see that in filtration basin, there's still a little bit of a pathway going down. But to understand what the shoreline would look like, there's that native seed mix. Additionally, they'd have some very specific plantings in here and some canopy trees that would help just kind of give it, again, that more park-like setting that I think the neighborhood might want. One thing worthy to note is, staff has advised that Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District, that as part of the agreement, will need some formalized agreement before any work will start. That would include some sort of long-term maintenance agreement, also some provisions for public outreach and education before any project occurs. So all that's to come right now is really just the letter of support to see if they can get funding to assist them with this project.
When would that grant be decided?
On the grant's submitted date is September 11th, and I believe they'll know by mid-October. This is a project that I think they've got a number of years, a few years to actually implement. The project wouldn't be implemented until at least 2024, though, so.
So, for my time on approving the, the current stormwater management that's happening there, was there any feedback from neighbors? It just seems like this has become just now, not even really much usable space for the public, and it's now, it's, it's a, it's a wetland for the watershed district. Is there, is there some type of path, or some kind of way that, that these residents can access the lake there? Because that doesn't appear. I mean, I don't know if that checkered, that's showing a, a path of some sort, but that, that's a concern of mine, is like, we've given up this park now to just, again, just be a wet, a wetland for Watershed District. And maybe this helps for downtown credits, I don't know, but.
But we wouldn't be giving up the land. We would retain ownership of the land.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, it's usable land, I guess, is really been.
There would be a pathway. The actual alignment, the detail of it, how wide, hasn't been determined, whether or not it, you know, flows, or, you know, how big it gets when it gets to the river. The true intent of the project is to stabilize the shore. So by having some more natural plants in there, we, it helps reduce that erosion along that area. The final design would be vetted out through the process after they were awarded funding, but as of right now, this is what is being proposed and would be included as part of the grant submitted project. If the council isn't comfortable with this plan and wants greater detail, I think that that's fine. You don't have to move forward with a letter of support at this time. You can ask the watershed for more detailed and updated plans, as well as public outreach and input before we support the project. The project moving forward for seeking assistance.
So just, I don't have a, I mean, I would be in favor of the application to, for a grant, just, I think, maybe some final say, whether it's planning commission or whatever, what it looks like, I guess is really a concern, because you just, you have parkland that is, again, seems like more of a, a wetland watershed project.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, was there ever a set restoration plan as part of the original work of putting in the stormwater pond?
I would defer to public works and engineering on that one.
Mayor City Council, with the North Shore Trail Street Utility Project, there was actually pretty extensive public outreach. We had the public in and several public open houses, and we did coordinate and communicate with the park group at the time. There were some concepts that were shown that could be implemented in time with this area and how they would fit around the stormwater requirements, part of the reconstruction project, with the amount of area that was disturbed with the project. So we had to have some stormwater treatment, and this is one of the only areas that we could get some of that volume, and then some other rain gardens in low areas within some existing ditch areas, but, but that's, then, you know, we have our stormwater basin and the topography journeying towards that, and then restoration, the project's not closed out, the contractor's required to do some ongoing maintenance here and mowing as it's reestablishing, but ultimately, there was a long-term, longer vision that's. But ultimately, there was a long-term, longer vision that's part of this is something that the watershed has identified as one of their areas they'd want to do stuff. And then along with that area that's left in between the buffer area that they're talking about and is outlined above to the streets, there could be other potential amenities added in that landscaping, other water quality features, tree planting, whatever would be the desire on a future implementation.
The credit on, or whatever was here is just to accommodate the North Shore Circle.
This, this stormwater improvements that were completed to date are specifically just for the North Shore Circle project.
I understand Councilmember Roberts' concerns and, and they're, I think they're really well-placed. But I also, and, and in addition to that, I think this helps us with, this grant helps with a portion of what's needed in this space. Happy to, happy to support it, happy to have partnership with the Watershed District in pursuing a component of that site restoration. But it sounds like we've got perhaps several phases to get this parcel into something that we want it to be long-term. Dave?
Just to add to the conversation, there are two parks on North Shore Circle. So there's this one and there's one farther to the east. There was discussion as part of the project to make that one to clear out some trees and to put a walking path and, you know, some kind of a dock or canoe or something like that. But that was ultimately shot down by the parks board. So we had some designs and everything drawn out. So I mean, that's something we can always revisit in the future now that maybe the neighborhood knows that, with this one. Option. I think this one really, the way it's finished off and that berm can't come down, so we might as well make the best out of what's, what's there and make it look nicer than it is now. But definitely something in the future because it's just a wooded lot that, you know, now after.
What's the distance between the two parks?
Oh.
The walking distance, I guess maybe is my.
Yep.
Are they walking distance from each other?
I mean, it's just down the, down the road a little ways, but I can grab you the map here and show you.
Maybe quarter mile or so, on that same, same side, just.
Any other questions, good discussion?
All right, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the North Shore Circle Park Shoreline Restoration Grant Letter of Support.
A second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose and motion carries. All right, we had, have no planned discussion workshop topics for this particular meeting. So we'll move right into staff updates and Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Bain and council members, just really quick. Right now, we're going through election services agreement, it's kind of going back and forth between the city and the county. So that's something that will be coming forward to you hopefully in September. They're eager to get that in front of their board as well. Also looking at the contract with Republic Services, I'm hoping to have the representative come in in September and go over amendment that's been presented. They're, they're, in the contract right now, there's the opportunity for them to extend that, which is what makes the most sense at this point. And, and have their representative come in and talk to council about changes. The biggest one is portables, doing away with the portables and getting another vendor for that because it's actually cheaper for the city. And then just looking at the pricing and the idea that there's some, some of that pricing increases that the Republic Services doesn't have any control over, it's part of the county increases. So having her come in and help council and the public understand how that pricing is laid out and what they have control over and what they don't have control over in terms of any increases. And then.
Did you say before you move on, did you say October?
Well, no, but, well, hopefully the September.
September workshop.
September workshop, yep. And then there was a third thing, but it's not coming to me.
Go back if you think of it.
That's it, thank you.
Abby?
I'm not too sure with the weekly recap this week, but just a couple of highlights. Just last week alone, we had new meetings, a new dental clinic, drive-through coffee, senior living. There are a number of non-residential things that are really starting to gain some ground and some traction. I would say, you know, development sometimes has that ebb and flow. We're, we're starting to kind of see that upward trend, I think, that we're only going to continue to have for a while. Beyond that, I just wanted to note for the council, I will be off until after Labor Day. If you need to get ahold of me, you might want to get ahold of me tonight. But I'll be available, I'll be checking emails if you need me.
Enjoy your time away.
Thank you.
Cut it.
Just one thing related to the County Environmental Center. I forward you, you this notice, but on Tuesday, September 12th, at 2:30 PM, there'll be a groundbreaking ceremony at the site. I did, I forwarded that in your email, so you should have that as a reminder in a project that we've been working on for about four years now, so.
What was the date again?
Tuesday, September 12th at 2:30. Oh, yeah.
Amanda?
Night, Mayor.
Dave?
Just the one update, just referring back to the pickleball court. And that tenure CIP in the parks, there is money, it was the full res servicing. So if we go back from that or whatever that would be, that was already planned in that budget, 424.
424?
Yep, so it would be the rehabilitation of all the infills out there that are been a major safety concern for years. And then there was a dollar amount put in for a full res servicing of the pick. Waiting for someone to come and take a look at it and then what the recommendations are. So it's at the high or worst-case scenario, and that can always get dealt back. We have heard from, and it was put in, in the CIP budget, so comment on that.
Thank you for that, hello. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, no specific updates unless you guys have any questions.
Chief Peterson?
No updates.
And Chief Newman?
No updates.
And Kevin?
No updates.
All right, bring it up for council updates, we'll start with Councilmember Roberts.
No, no real update, just a question on, there's been a couple, residents have reached out, I know to Public Works about these access points to the lake and where we're going with that. And I know it's been something that previous councils have gone through, but I think maybe, I don't know where, but the answer was back to, I think we're going to remove some rocks for that one, but might be a good, a discuss, a workshop discussion at some point.
Put me on, so workshop discussion, always happy to have a workshop discussion. Is the thought that we, is it on design access points? We've, we've, just to kind of maybe set the stage, we've talked about, you know, from time to time, council gets requests that we should close or further restrict public use of right-of-way points. There's been some, over the years, conversation around maintenance of them, help guide a little bit more.
I guess just more clarification for the public, maybe it doesn't have to be a workshop. Maybe it just needs to be put out because there seems to be a lot of confusion on, on that as to who has access to those. You know, obviously, it sounds like the conversation previous was to not allow boats for launching for these species and that. But I just think that personally, the more access that we can have residents who don't live directly on the lake, to the lake, it's only going to bring the value why people want to come to live in Forest Lake. And so however that can be done, and I know that you have issues with neighbors and these have been long conversations, but I think that having those open as much as possible is, is only benefit to the residents.
But if we were to start with, we could pencil this in at any, near term, maybe just a review of, I think it's always good to just kind of remind everyone of how many access points there are and what our current restrictions are of those. Maybe would be a good kind of workshop topic just to refresh everyone. And we're in the middle of season transition as we kind of sadly close out summer boating season, move into winter access, that kind of brings up a whole host of different types of access questions. Dave, does that seem, seem doable?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we have a presentation set up that shows them all and, you know, some are rights-of-way and some are city properties, some are easements. Amen to them, plus it was last fall or this early spring when we kind of gathered about, you know, maintenance. That was a lot of workshops and council meetings to get that together. So we can bring that back out so everyone can get refreshed on.
I think it's, I think it's good to refresh us on, refresh the public on. It's something that we as council members get questioned on routinely. There's always some level of neighborhood disagreement around use of that. And it's something we do get questioned on a fair amount, so when it fits.
I think this one's a good example in that there were, at some point, this Public Works or whatever was instructed to put boulders there and then found out maybe they shouldn't, so now we're removing them. So this is a good example of working through that, so there is clarity there.
Yeah, this, the one that from the resident, the boulders were just either moved by somebody else or they were displaced. Actual issue was that he was concerning, I don't know, winter with his four-wheelers. Last week and just, so he could have access with that. And then private property sign up on the.
Resident enforcement is part of the challenge.
A lot, I mean, you run into a lot, a lot though, you'll have an abandoned right-of-way that have, you know, driving around constantly and checking for signs, that's, that's another. Yeah, if we can put that together and once we have something together, we can.
If we could, it was before having this conversation, if we could include Clear Lake as well as Forest Lake, I think Clear Lake has similar, doesn't, I think there's a fewer number, but similar kind of universal topics. Okay. Very good, anything else? Councilmember Valento?
Just want to remind everyone that tomorrow is the last night for Arts in the Park. It's a good band and there's the corn feed, so it should be super fun to close out summer. That's it.
Abby, did you get all of, all of your, all positions filled, councils?
I'm not certain, but I, I'm not naming any names, but I think only one of you offered to volunteer, so.
Need for some last-minute volunteers.
If there is, get ahold of Jamie tomorrow, she can schedule you in.
Perfect.
Even if you just show up, probably put you to work.
Very good. Councilmember Presnick?
No updates tonight, thanks.
And Councilmember Barrettson?
No updates.
All right.
Just real quick, thanks again to the members of the Pickleball Association that came out tonight. Always great to see a full room and I'm glad to see a lot of enthusiastic support. Also, I've had a number of questions related to the 2024 budget. I know staff is working on putting together some materials to just help to digest all of the information that's been presented over the last six to nine months on this topic. It is, there's a lot, there's a lot to digest, there's a lot to present. And so getting some graphics and some information to make that as palatable, as easy to read as possible, it's good. And the other thing I would say is, if people have questions about that budget, the last couple of budget presentations, in my opinion, have done a really nice job of walking through a lot of detail of the impact of budget, what's coming in. Again, there's a lot there, but it does, it does tell a complete story. And just know that we're working on getting some more summary-level documents that just give more, at a glance, kind of what, what is being proposed for 2024. And certainly more of that will be coming out in part of future workshop conversations as we roll towards consideration of the preliminary levy here at the end of September.
That's the end of our planned agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have a motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.